Well, good evening and thank you all for being here on this cold ball night. This is the Finance Advisory Board, October twenty seventh meeting, six thirty P M. Six thirty two P M. We'll go ahead and call to order. I'll just do a quick roll call. In fact, we'll just go around the table. I do want to first introduce our controller for the town of Wellington. So Patty Lundie, who works in my department, has been with the town for many, many years. So she's here to take notes and is a great resource. She's got a lot of institutional knowledge, so. Any questions that we may not be able to answer, she'll take down for us and we can follow up with everyone. So. Just want to go around the table and introduce yourself.
Nick Newville.
Alex Boy.
Jason Mellon.
Ed Cannon.
Perfect. And Trusty Cannon is our liaison from the board of trustees. So do a quick business consideration of minutes from my mouse. So these were the the minutes from the July twenty eighth meeting. Where we discussed the bylaws and the financial management policies. Any corrections, comments on those?
The question I had is if we're at, if were those a formal? We were not doing formal.
They're not, we still have to have a record of the meeting.
Okay.
That filed with the town clerk. So that's what these are. So we're not doing like a formal. Take a motion in a second to vote. We'll just do a very simple, unless there's no.
You know, approving the minutes.
We do, we do have to, I guess, approve them, but it's not a formal process of.
Make it formal, so I make a move. I'm a non-voting member, so there you go. Make a motion to accept the minutes.
A little second.
All right. Any? Is discussion, seeing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Look how formal we got.
Yeah, I know, just just beats things along.
We know what to do with that.
Yeah.
Doesn't have to be more than longer.
The the big discussion tonight is going to be the draft fiscal year twenty twenty six budget for the town of Wellington. So. I got it on a bigger PDF here. I'm just going to do a couple walkthrough. Information and then we can go through however level of detail y'all want to go through. Questions, comments, feedback. It all is appreciated and we will be going back to the board tomorrow, tomorrow evening. So if there are comments from the Finance Advisory Board, I can take those as can Trusty Cannon. But I'll start with a quick timeline. So the official budget development season for twenty twenty six kicked off in May. However, the budget is guided by the strategic plan. And the strategic plan was adopted by the Board of Trustees in August of last year. It's a four-year strategic plan, so or five-year strategic plan, twenty twenty five to twenty twenty nine. And we build, the budget is built around achieving the elements of the strategic plan and and that. Strategic plan put forth by the board was vision. So welcome to Wellington, or excuse me, the vision for the strategic plan was welcome to Wellington. Where deep-rooted values and a rich heritage unite to forge paths that honor our past. Ignite a legacy of unity and create a welcoming community for all. The mission of the organization is to provide outstanding municipal services for our community of today and tomorrow. The guiding principles are community-centered relationships, fiscal responsibility and accountability. And then the strategic directions were to grow responsibly, to cultivate and nurture community spaces. Foster economic vibrancy and ensure strong town operations. So that's what was adopted last August and then in May, staff and the board sat down for a work session where we discussed the board's twenty twenty six. Budget priorities. Those budget priorities identified below are the our economic development. Emergency preparedness, home rule, affordable housing. And alternative water solutions. So those are some of the big items. That in that May meeting, the board directed staff to address through through the budget process. Staff kicked off the budgeting development session or process in June. It's a multi-month process where we look at previous financials. We estimate year-end expenditures and revenues. We approximate our requests. For next year, so how much are things going to cost? Look at projects. And we do that at an operational level, so the day-to-day may also do it at a capital expenditure level, so your big projects. Throughout the community. Like I said, several month process. And it's very heavily centered around spreadsheets that the finance department puts together. So it's done through Excel. And Patty has some great knowledge with our accounting system, pulls all the data in for us. And then department heads are responsible for their own department's budgets. So the finance team works together with the department leadership to build the spreadsheets that you'll see coming up. September sixteenth was a work session again with the board. It was a two-part work session. Our director of H R. Went through personnel, including personnel requests, add staff requests and benefit increases. Or benefit prices for twenty twenty six. And then all the department heads were present to discuss operating expenditure requests. So how much is it going to cost to keep the lights on and provide services for the community? At that meeting, the board did direct staff to include a three percent Mola, Cola, cost of living. Adjustment and merit increase for staff. That they also approved a position for the Parks and Recs Department. And our benefits did see a thirteen percent increase, so our director of H R worked with staff, including a. Survey of uptown staff to determine what was more important, a deduct, a higher deduct, excuse me, a lower deductible. And paying more or to keep your payment relatively the same and have a little bit higher deductible. So we did change the the benefits that were presented. That are offered to staff this year, just going to change the deductible a little bit next year, but keeping the costs relatively the same for staff. So and then September thirtieth, there was a special work session where we discussed the capital improvement projects. Those capital improvement projects next year are going to be heavily focused on Main Street. We have the revitalizing Main Street grant, so that's including, it is a four point four million dollar grant. To help offset nearly eight million dollars in expenses to add storm drainage and several other improvements on the Cleveland Corridor here. That was a grant that was given by the state of Colorado, so it is secure. And that is in design right now, multi-year, like I said, several million dollars and will probably, I believe, is kicking off construction in.
February.
Yeah, it's early next year. And then October fourteenth, there was the draft budget presentation. This is a required by municipal code that the town administrator present budget. That's what you're going to see tonight. To the board, that includes fund balances, revenues and expenses. So it's the, all the pieces come together. Into this presentation and it is scheduled for adoption consideration on November eighteenth. So we'll be giving an update to the board again tomorrow, like I said. And then bringing it back a couple weeks later in the formal adoption or budget book. Which has a lot of supplementary information. It's not just the dollars and cents, but that'll be for consideration in mid-November. So any questions on that timeline? Couple of you have been around very similar to previous years. We did not do a budget retreat this year, like like a full-day budget retreat was done last year. We spread it out over several work sessions. And presentations, so.
We do have a couple of questions on the page before you.
Absolutely.
Are you ready to do that?
Yeah.
There's a misspelling.
Unit and should have united.
Yeah, unite, not unit. Right where your cursor is to the.
Thank you.
Just FYI. I was curious because of my background, I queued up on emergency preparedness was a budget priority. But I didn't see any emergency preparedness in the budget, so. It made me just kind of curious what that, what it meant, like what we're doing in emergency preparedness wise.
Absolutely. So there were two major areas identified. A few, several months ago, staff. And a couple of trustees took part in a tabletop exercise with the Office of Emergency Management from Laramie County. Brought together town, school district, fire department, Laramie County Sheriff's Office, O E M. I think there was another Laramie County Department there and we did a half-day exercise at the Leaper Center where we walked through a. If an emergency were to happen in Wellington, what would, what would happen? It was a scenario in which we had a. I think they, Laramie County picked a fire, a wildfire out near the water treatment plant that was coming this way to town. From that exercise, we identified that the town of Wellington needs a. Emergency response plan and a continuity of operations plan. We did some looking into how much those were going to cost. The emergency response plan, we determined could be done in-house. And so there were, there are some consultation dollars included in administration. Let's see. Revenue. So in the administrative. Here you go. Professional services.
Okay, I see it.
The emergency response plan is going to be completed in-house and then we have the continuity of operations. Is scheduled for twenty twenty seven, so that'll give us time to bid for professional services to help them. Now that's a. A very comprehensive plan that needs more than just in-house.
Should be able to get a family grant for that too, if there's still.
It's enough.
Yeah. Those are all very common things.
Thank you.
Yeah, that that's helpful. I didn't catch that one little line on there.
It's only about six hundred and eighty lines to review.
Yeah, it was a little bit.
Ballpark.
I also had a question. What does, what does home rule mean for budget priority?
I can answer that one. For the past two years, home rule has been a priority for the Board of Trustees. Home rule is, is. A change in how we govern here. We're, we're known as a statutory town, which means that. State statutes tell us what our powers and authorities are. And if they don't list a certain power or certain authority, then we can't exercise that without getting permission or asking them to change the state statutes, which is almost impossible to do. But the Colorado Constitution allows municipalities and even counties to switch to home rule, which means. As a home rule community, you're not bound necessarily by those state statutes, powers and authorities. You have the authority locally to. To operate to best need, meet the needs of your community. And home rule requires, it requires two elections. It requires some consultation and so forth. So it will take some money for, for the two elections. It will take money for legal fees and so forth. But as a home rule community, it's really a great protection for us from. You know, you know, Denver is always doing things, issuing. Executive orders and new laws and so forth that are really hurting statutory towns, but home rule has protections from that. But also, you know, we look at the other one, says economic development as far as a budget priority, home rule. Can greatly enhance your ability to perform economic development. Because it's a statutory town, you can't do things like provide incentives for businesses to come, but as a home rule community, you can. You've got greater revenue generation, you've got greater power and authority over your local environment without the interference from Denver. So it's been a board priority. Last year, they pulled it because there was some. There's always finding challenges, but they pulled it and delayed it till twenty twenty six. So it's still up there. It's still a matter of debate though, but. To me, it's most, probably the most important thing that we can do as a community to set us up for success now into the future, so. So that, that's what home rule is. And it's, I'm very passionate about it. And but again, we're always running into challenges with paying for this, paying for that, paying for things and. Keep pieces of equipment and new personnel and so forth like that, but. But home rule really sets us up for revenue generation without raising taxes. It allows us to bring in more commercial businesses. Which is commercial property taxes, retail sales taxes and so forth.
It is it. I was recently talking to some county commissioners. And they were talking about home rule, like from the county perspective and. For them, there's risk in doing it because you could get a wild card in there. It's hard to overcome.
Yeah, I mean, there's. You know, the way home rule is, is set up is the first election is you're asking the voters in the town. To approve of the election for charter commission and that same ballot, you have a list of candidates. That are, that are applying to become part of the whole charter commission. After that election, they have by law, one hundred and eighty days to write the charter for the town. And the Colorado Municipal League has tons of help for that. There's no one that's ever missed that deadline, so. They'll write the charter, then there's another election where the residents will actually vote on the charter. And once that happens, you become a home rule community. So yeah, legal fees, we want to do marketing, do some polling to find out, you know. I think Monument recently did one a couple of years ago, become home rule and. They hired a, I think Magellan, they hired, and Magellan's a great company for doing polling. And they, they found out that without any kind of public education, the. The interest level was pretty low, but with public education, it increased and home rule passed for them.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank, thank you.
Sure, hope I, if you get any more questions, I'd be happy to.
So there is, and so that gives us a lot of information down here on the home rule. Hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars included in the budget for home rule. Trusty Cannon spoke about the education marketing piece. That's about thirty-five thousand, thirty, thirty-five thousand. There's forty-five thousand for an election. It would have to be because of those timelines that are. In there, one hundred and eighty days, we would have to facilitate election and we do them not through the county. There are about forty-five thousand versus fifteen thousand for coordinated election. So it's all, it's all included in there and that is a topic that the, the board is. Provide, still providing direction to town staff on. So do you have any other questions?
No, it wasn't a question. Now, the last thing I was going to talk about or mention was the L C S O. Contract increase. I know that Sheriff's Office, it has a, like a one point eight million dollar deficit. And they're having to cut, they're cutting staffing and train, they're cutting a lot of things. And as a first responder here, I can assure you that they're providing. Very good service when we need them, they're there. And if we had any cut in their service, it would, it would be bad. Definitely would have bad outcomes because of it, so I hope there's support on the council for. Even though it's an increase.
We've already approved the L C S O contract.
Okay.
I will tell you that I'm also part of the Colorado Municipal League Policy Committee. And there is a municipality-sponsored piece of legislation that's going to be introduced this spring. And that legislation really is to allow municipalities to use that. What's that radar system called?
That flock cameras?
Flock cameras, yeah. I think it was. Whitfield or Wheaton. They wanted to be able to use those cameras on the interstate traffic because they had seventy, they had seventy-six and they had all these other. State highways through there, but they couldn't control, you know, or. Control the traffic on the interstates because, you know, just wouldn't let them. But meanwhile, they're being, they're responding to accidents out there, just like L C S O is, just like Wellington Fire District and so forth. I doubt if it will pass the legislation. It, seat out, probably just never approved it. They don't want a state highway with seventy-five different speed cameras.
Well, there's a lot of flock cameras in Colorado already.
My, my thought, flock cameras aren't the speed cameras. The, the flock cameras are the license plate.
Yeah.
Yes. It's, it's a, it's a different, it's a different type of system, but they're, they're asking the state legislator to approve legislation to allow.
Local speeding.
If it passes, L C S O would then have the authority. To monitor that on the interstate, you know. Fines would come into the county, which would have funds in their operations and so forth, but like I said, it doesn't seem like it's going to be. Very much a chance of success.
Okay, thank you.
The other thing to know about the L C S O contract is there's been conversations around an additional S R O. In Wellington, if not an S R O, which is split fifty-fifty with P S D, but P S D is on a different fiscal calendar, so we. We don't know where P S D is going to land yet because of their funding changes with everything that's come down from federal and state. The S R O was discussed. Our, this dollar amount does not include any additional officer at this point. However, it does include Wellington's share of the flock cameras. So then, and there we have seen in Wellington responses because of those flock cameras. So a license plate gets flagged and they've stopped vehicles at the Maverick and whatnot. Or Wellington vehicle actually was recovered because of flock cameras. So it does include that, which is a new expense for L C S O in Wellington this year. It also includes a small, I think it's ten or fifteen thousand dollar. Expense to help offset the mental health response unit. So that's something that the county. L C S O have provided in Wellington that they haven't billed for per se. It's not been built into our contract and. They have, they have done that this year, so including cost of living. Adjustment and those additional services. It's an increase to keep the same number of deputies, we're not. Decreasing services at all, increase year over year of a hundred and thirty-two. Thousand, hundred and thirty-three thousand.
And that's an important point. Every year from now on, it's going to be another hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars per year coming out of the general fund, so.
Now, this, on the right-hand side, there's a column that says as requested. This was that first work session on September sixteenth. So those are the dollars, dollar amounts that staff had put together at first. As the budget development process went on and we started to look at revenues, we realized, you know, that. We can't always get what we want, so we had to look at what do we need? The general fund was able to scale back by nearly five hundred thousand dollars. A big part of that was in, we are doing a hiring freeze. In twenty twenty-six, so there's two vacant public works admin positions. That we are not taking off of, of. The organizational chart, but we are not funding them at this point. As we've instituted the hiring freeze, that also is going to impact the park fund. So the position that was originally approved. We have, we have decided to not add the additional funding and keep a hiring freeze in place across the organization for those vacant positions. We've also moved a community survey and a compensation study. We've looked at the timelines of how often we do those and we've adjusted those. So they will not be taking place next year. The original L C S O budget was an estimation. We hadn't had a quote from them yet, so that's why there's a little bit of change there. And then the other big changes were in the water fund with the interest rates reducing. If, if our North Buddha contract stays the same, we do still anticipate that the expense for the water will go down. Sewer Fund, our department leadership in Public Works, as well as the superintendent from the sewer fund. Did a comprehensive assessment now that we've had the plant online of what those expenses are really going to look like. So they were able to reduce about a hundred and sixteen thousand. The park fund between the Parks and Rec staff as well as reducing services for trees and for lawn care. Made some reductions there and then there were some. Big reductions in capital improvement projects by delaying the facility. Delaying cemetery mapping, unnecessary comment at the end. Reducing, excuse me, reducing or delaying some. Projects in the water fund and delaying a roofing project in the sewer fund. So all of that's what led to the current state of the budget that you'll be seeing. Staff worked to reduce nearly seven hundred thousand dollars. From original presented expenses, which. Then lead us into fund balance. So fund balance is, you take. Your estimated beginning fund balance. So what we've done is we looked at our fund balance from, from the beginning of this year. We've approximated across all of our departments and funds, what our revenues are going to look like for the end of this year. What expenditures are going to look like? We plan for transfers or any debt service and. When you add in your beginning fund balance, you add your revenue in and then you take out your expenditures. This is going to be your net operations. So. How much of that fund balance are you adding or spending to meet the operational needs of each department and fund? Then we look at capital. We had for several years, had some pretty significant loan proceeds. Those were for the two large treatment plant facilities. We don't, we have a little bit coming in for the sewer fund, but that project is, is, is closing out. The, then we go into capital grants, so these are grants that have been awarded and this is that. Four point four million that I mentioned for the revitalizing Main Street grants. Now, we have applied for some grants, however, they haven't been awarded, so we don't include them in the dollar amount. But we did want to highlight that there were grants that we're applying for. And then we took all of our capital projects, you add all those together and you see. On each one of these, with the exception of our trust funds, we are going to be spending a little bit into the fund balance or, or reserve, if you will. And then we calculate out to a ending fund balance. So this is what we estimate the fund balance will end. At the end of twenty twenty-six. One thing that's a little bit different about this year is this is a fund, the beginning fund balance was calculated off of the audited twenty twenty-three numbers. So it is actually the most current and accurate fund balance that's been presented to the board in several recent years. It was done with audited numbers. And current financial reports that the board has seen. So we actually have started off twenty, we're anticipating that we are going to be starting off twenty twenty-six. Actually about eleven million higher than we originally, last year at this time, thought we'd be ending the year. So we start off in a good spot. Now you do have fund balance spending, but you build up a fund balance to help offset the bigger capital projects. And you'll see across all funds that we are needing the reserve requirements at the end of the year. So those reserve requirements are, what are currently outlined in our financial management policies. And we do meet the reserve requirements across our proposed financial management policy. And we do meet the, um, reserve requirements across our proposed financial management policies. Any questions on the fund balance? Where are we going to the line items that make it all that?
I do.
Yeah.
Sorry. The, yeah, maybe it's just an optics thing, but the water fund. Is the thing that everybody is so, um, sensitive to. And the way that it's displayed shows that, um, there's far more revenue. Than operating expenses. To the tune of one point seven million and. Um, I understand there's also capital expenses that need to be covered. But is there maybe a different way to display or to? Pre-present the, the numbers so that it isn't so, um. So pointed at a, a revenue that is much higher than the operating.
Absolutely. So not on the, that main fund balance page, but, um, in the budget book. When you get to the water fund section, this is what we actually display. So there are two large restricted funds that make up that fund balance. Um, yeah, of the water fund. So operations is your, your day-to-day funds. We have roughly. Uh, what thirteen million of that total amount you saw is, i- is restricted. So impact fees are fees paid by developers, um, they could only be used for capital. Uh, and then raw water fees are getting paid by developers and, and businesses when they come in. They have to bring water with them. This is the whole idea of, um, pay, you have to pay for your, pay your way in, uh, pay, so. When we are looking at that total fund of sixteen point six. Um, not all of that is available for operations, um.
So maybe that's the answer, it would be to separate that out so that when people from the town are looking at. That they can see what is coming from their water bill. Separately from the impact fees or other sources of revenue.
Like a restricted line or.
So, so yeah, we could separate out, um, like user revenue and then restricted revenue.
Yeah, actually the, not so much the budget book, but our audited financials. Do a much better job in my opinion because they, they will list what your, what your restricted funds are, what your unrestricted funds are, what your. Uh, I mean, there's a lot of money that comes in that, that's dedicated for certain things like Nick was just saying, so. We don't take taxes for, for, for the, you know, to fund the water fund, that's all from user fees. And the operations is really the, the key part of that. Um, but the other stuff we get, those are donations, they're, they're, developers are paying the impact of adding four hundred new homes. Okay, that impact is, well, they pay street impact fees, they pay sewer and drainage and, and all these other impact fees. And they gotta bring water to the table, or they can bring cash in loose, so, I mean, those, those are all restricted, so you can't use them for operations.
And I, I think having that separated out could help alleviate some of the. Cause somebody's just gonna go quick to this, right, and go, oh.
You're rolling in money.
Yeah, 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 exactly.
I wish, and I wish it were, and the, you know, the impact fees should be paying for capital expenses and that sort of thing. Our water bill should be paying for the operations, so kind of lining it up that way, I think. The optics of that would be better.
Yeah, well, I, I definitely take that as feedback and see what other communities, how, how they represent that. This is a, uh, a high level.
Yeah, I understand.
But to your point, if this is the one page someone looks at, you, you wanna make it clear.
They're not gonna go to six hundred and eighty pages.
It's not that bad.
It's right.
But no, I, I appreciate that feedback, cause that is, you know, we do show operating expenditure to three point two. When operating revenue, about four point seven, so does give a better.
Yes.
Alignment there.
Yeah.
So, and that's, that four point seven is, whoops, also before the overhead transfers and, uh, debt service, so.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks.
So any other questions on fund balance? So this is all the revenues, see if I can get a little bit bigger for you. Revenue's broken down into each fund. You give your general fund, this is, um, predominantly property tax and sales tax. And then fees for service. The reason that cigarette tax and retail marijuana tax are, uh, redacted is because it is. Um, the retail marijuana tax is paid by one taxpayer, so we do have to keep it confidential because of the three percent. Or excuse me, five percent, um, sales tax, you could reverse the, uh, reverse calculate. Um.
I think we're all curious to know how much has been sold here, but yeah.
We find sign this confidentiality agreement with Department of Revenue at the state level.
Yeah, me, I sign it.
Yeah, and one person can see that number unless he decides to share that with somebody and not tell anybody.
You can go to jail.
Yeah.
Um, it's not insignificant.
Uh, yeah.
Uh, and i- if and when there is a, another. Entity paying into that line item, then it is.
Then you can list it.
Then we can list it.
Good.
So. So, there's a couple new, um, I don't wanna say fees or new line items. Um, we have separating out now our marijuana store license, so this is based off of our fee schedule, it was going into miscellaneous. We've wanted to be more transparent about where those, um, uh, revenues were coming from. Um, payment convenience fee, so in October, beginning of this month, we have instituted a three percent. Uh, card processing fee for all non-utility payments, so you can still pay your water bill. Water sewer, um, your utility bill with no fee, uh, you can do that with your credit card or debit card, but any other, uh, fee. Um, does have a three percent card processing fee on top, so this is a place to capture that revenue. And that directly offsets the fee that we are charged, um, to offer this service. So our card processor charges a fee, uh, this, which we account for in expenditures in several funds. So this is an offset for that, uh, and then cemetery disinterment is on the fee schedule, needed a place to go, so. Any, any questions on, uh, you, you'll see that the sales tax, we are projecting a five percent increase over this year's budget. Um, this year's budget was two point six, we're, uh, estimating, um, that we're gonna hit that. That's based on an eight percent year-over-year growth, um, excuse me, eight percent year-over-year increase in sales tax revenue. Which is a bit of an anomaly across, uh, a lot of municipalities, uh, and is driven because of the delivery. Um, services that actually deliver in Wellington. So we have several, um. Merchants, big merchants that have warehouses or multiple grocery stores. Um, that deliver to Wellington and we get the sales tax for those deliveries. Um, we're a, a bedroom community of Fort Collins, so a lot of people that live here are now having their. Deliveries here as well.
So Fort Collins doesn't get any sales tax from that, do they get it?
Unless you drive to Fort Collins and shop at King Super or anyplace else at Fort Collins. We did a market leakage analysis in twenty eighteen. And if you take all the residents and all the households, how much they spend for just day-to-day goods. Not counting mortgages and rent and utilities and that kind of stuff. Hundred and fourteen million dollars a year spent in other communities. That's about eleven million dollars of lost sales tax revenue for us, which is another reason why home law has been a. Priority because we need to bring those retail venues here. We should be generating more of a revenue. From sales taxes, but it's only like a one point, one point zero two times when property taxes are. Then that's almost nine percent, nine times as much, so.
We don't have a Costco.
No, we don't have.
From that stuff.
Yeah, they don't have Costco, we don't have Buc-Ee's.
Like, yeah.
They have the shields.
But if you have it shipped to your house, you get sales tax, they don't.
Yeah, yeah, I, I bet people don't know that.
There was a plug once and I feel like we should plug it again.
Yeah.
Um, now you'll notice across a lot of these revenue items that there's a decrease, um, and a big part of that's because they're, they're driven by development. Um, when we did the budget last year, we anticipated a hundred and eight residential permits in twenty-twenty-five. Uh, we're ending the year with, uh, approximately twenty-eight. So that's significantly lower revenues than we anticipated, um, and we are projecting next year with only thirty-eight. So we've revised projections, this is based on number of lots available, this is our planning and building department working with developers. Um, to see what they have slated, and, um, while we do have several projects in, in the pipeline. They have to put in infrastructure first, so even if they were to break ground, you've got your streets, you've got your water, you've got your sewer, you've got your drainage. That needs to go in first, um, so we revised those projections to thirty-eight, which is why the budgets are significantly lower. Than they are in twenty-twenty-five. Any questions on general fund revenues?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just to make sure I have everything right, we all understand it. The property tax line, if I were to take, uh, that will twenty-four and then budget twenty-five, that's how we get it. Our estimate for twenty, into year twenty-five, right?
Actually, the projected, um, property taxes are based on property tax values and our mill levy. So the county provides us with, um, their essentially first round of assessment values in August. Um, our mill levy is two point four six, two point four three, um, so we are able to calculate that out. Um, based on the property values. The reason the twenty-twenty-five estimate, year-end estimate looks so healthy. Is because that's like two and a half years worth of property taxes that they ultimately, um, released to us from catching up on audits. Uh, as we continue to work with the auditor to finish twenty-twenty-four, so that we don't have this backlog anymore. We are just, we're gonna be receiving our property revenues as, uh, as scheduled.
How's that feeling?
Uh, it's, October fifteenth was the special revenue dis- excuse me, special district deadline. So our, um, auditor did have to pause us to finish those. Uh, and I, uh, sent him the email just even today, um. Because we do have grant deadlines coming up that we need to be in compliance for, so I'm trying to continue to put pressure. On, on them, wouldn't pay them anything for this year, so they probably wanna get it done.
That helps.
Any other questions on general fund? So then we go into street fund, street fund does receive a portion of, um, sales tax. A portion of the use tax, they have their, uh, own revenue and motor vehicle use tax, and they receive highway users, um. Uh, highway users tax, uh, we did have a, a backlog in highway users tax as well that was released this year. Um, but we do get projections from the state on what those revenues will be next year, so that's, that's where that number comes in. Um. And then there's, uh, lots of permits in, in this as well, and you'll see that this is where we have, uh, so the, the grant. In budget twenty-twenty-five, we've reallocated some of those expended expenses. So then we're also reallocating some of the, uh, grant revenue. We haven't received it yet, but based on where the expenses are paid for, whether the street fund. Or the drainage fund, since it is a large drainage project, um, we reallocate the grants to offset those expenses. Uh, water fund. So again, our, our permits are down, um, water sales, we take a conservative approach with water sales. And I'll also say that based on the municipal utilities rate and fee study that's currently taking place. We're actually projecting these sales using the twenty-twenty-five rates. Uh, what that allows us to do is two things, is, is provide a, uh, um. Uh, like I said, conservative projection, um, and also we are only gonna be changing rates for our residents. Once in each year going forward, so past several years, your rates would update on January. Um, calendar rate update, but then your sewer rate wouldn't, uh, so all of your rates would change. And then in April, your sewer rates recalculated, your sewer rate is based on your winter average. So that's your water use average in January, February and March. So we would potentially impact residents with two rate changes or two billing statement changes a year. We're no longer gonna be doing the January rate change, we're gonna be doing one rate change at the same time that we're calculating your. Your winter use average, so your billing statement should only change once a year. Um, there is a resident advisory group that's been part of this, uh, rate and fee study. They'll be presenting to the board as well as the consultants in December. And then there'll be two public hearings in February to, um, adopt the new rates. So, um, that also is giving us some additional time to work with, uh, North Pooter Irrigation. On, um, seeing what can be done about the, the contract price. So. Any questions on street fund, water fund? Through funds, a lot. Um, that was interesting. Drainage fund, again, we reallocated some of the grants, um. So park fund, park fund is funded in, um, in part by sales tax and use tax as well. Um, and then they have some impact fees, uh, one big thing we've been working with the, uh, leadership in the park fund on. Is really getting an understanding of what their recreation fees, um, are and making sure that we are. Properly projecting those, you wanna be conservative, but you don't wanna be overly conservative, um, cause then you're under representing your revenue. So, um, that has to be continued to see growth in our, um. Recreation activities and participation, so that's why you see the increased revenue, um, for. For the, the rec fees. And then, uh, trust funds, we do have two trust funds, the library trust fund, which is funded by impact fees. And we have a conservation trust fund, which is, uh, dollars that are received from the state. Um, and for the purpose of fund balances, they're grouped together. There is actually, um. I uncovered today a line item missing from this, um, and it is the actual conservation trust fund revenue. Which will be updated for the board tomorrow. And is in the spreadsheet.
Lottery proceeds.
Yeah. Um. So year-to-date, we've received five hundred and eight, five hundred and nine thousand lottery receipts. Uh, conservation trust fund, again, there was, um, a chunk several or since twenty-twenty-two. So those are quarterly payments and we received one in, received one quarter in twenty-twenty-two. Um, so that got caught up this year, we're projecting, um, three hundred and sixty thousand next year.
So if we buy our lottery tickets in Wellington, that helps too.
Comes out of the state pool.
Come, yeah, from out of the pool of all, but.
That is restricted.
It, it is restricted, uh, so it's, it doesn't go into the park fund, it's, um, has very restricted uses, um, so. We jump back. It's part of this, and these trust funds can only be used, um, within certain parameters that have been established. Conservation trust fund's gonna be for parks, open space, trails, um, property acquisition that supports those, that type of thing.
So you, that bottom line is you're projecting an eighteen percent decrease in revenue?
Overall revenue, including grants.
And you feel that?
And loans.
That's accurate, cause that's including a bunch of catch-up money also.
Uh, there's not, there's no catch-up money in the projected, so the eighteen percent is from the twenty-twenty-five budget. So it's at thirty-one point five.
End of your estimate.
Correct, yeah, correct. Yeah, it's from the thirty one point five to the twenty five point eight. And yes, it's been, that's primarily because of the loan dollars from the sewer treatment plant. In the sewer treatment plant this ye- year. Or last year. So loan. Loan proceeds, um you know, we had one point one there, we also budgeted. The RMS dollars to be received this year and they weren't to move those over to next year too. Made it up with a lot more loan proceeds than. Um, we budgeted for, and that's just because of the timing on reimbursements. All right, part everyone interested in expenditures. So what you see is you have your end of year estimate, you have the original request, that's what was presented in September. You can see the updates that have been um recommended by staff, and then you'll see the the new column. The percentages again are percentage increase or decrease over the twenty five budget, which is your first yellow column. And then there's some notes that um to say why that change was made or what what might be going on there. The top two lines and most of the departments are going to be your wages, uh wage of salaries and benefits. So you'll see um the. While there is a three percent cola and merit. Pool, um some of them might be up or down a little bit, and that's going to be based on some also included in there is like overtime. So overtime calculations, on-call stipends, um and any adjustments um for. Like if someone gets another certification or something like that.
So did, did you update your benefit calculation process like we had talked about last year? Or a while back, or is it? So that it doesn't change dramatically month to month? In the monthly reports. Um, we talked about just like applying. Here's what the total benefit cost is for the town. As a percentage of the salary. Instead of trying to. Figure out what each department's. Down to the penny uh contributionals.
So no, we have not changed that um. We do have a new payroll provider, um so we moved to Paycom. And Paycom direct bills each GL, um and it's uh. It's done on payroll, every payroll cycle, so they are down to the penny. Because of how the the it it's built with the with the payroll provider with Paycom. So it's um me as as finance director, I'm assigned to the finance department. So for my like my, we, you know, the my benefits are. Our health, health insurance has a cost. And Paycom swoops that out of the finance. There, so.
There, you have two, you could have somebody in one department that makes a thousand dollars and has a hundred dollar. Benefit line, somebody in another department that makes a thousand dollars and they could have a hundred and fifty dollar benefit line. And so the cost of benefits will be different in each department.
The right.
What you're saying, yeah.
Yeah, but through the system though, are you able to fine tune that so you don't have to have a conservative estimate?
On top of that, yeah. Okay, that it was just a question.
Yeah, no, and I'm, I am, I am trying to remember back to that conversation, I might go back and. Look at our budget meeting from last year.
Yeah, because it was. Every, at the organizational level, you have a benefit rate of thirty two percent. Or whatever it is, it's somewhere around thirty two, thirty three percent. And so you can budget that way. It's easier to budget that way because you know if you're gonna hire a new person. You know what thirty two percent of that is, and you can just put that in the budget, and if um. Or when you're going to calculate raises or. Cutting positions, it's easier to calculate because you're not having to worry about what. What benefits do you get versus what benefits does that person get versus that person, because then they're not the same.
Unless you hire somebody and they got a wife and four kids and, yeah, then they've got a higher benefit.
Right. With which would cause you to try to avoid hiring somebody that would have more expensive benefits.
Well, what they do is they budget. You know, let's say someone leaves and then on her back, well, the person who left had, they were single, okay? When they estimate the cost for replacing that person, they assume that they're going to be married with a couple of kids. And it's just a way of conservatively budgeting for that one, that one position. And it's tight of a budget that we got, the more precise you can get. The the better it is.
Uh, my only other thing I was thinking about is that I have no questions about any of the dollar amounts. On anything, which is great because we did all of that a long time ago.
Yeah.
And that was painful. I noticed there's a lot of repeated account titles.
Yes.
And it would be nice to see those summed.
Okay.
Um, so. Uh, professional development is in almost all the category and with many thousands of dollars in each one. Well, how much money are we spending on professional development in the town? As an example, and I'm. Pro. Education of making sure people are at the top of their game and can practice at the top of their their scope. But uh if we're really tight on a budget, professional development is an area. That you need to be able to look at and and make tough decisions with sometimes, because that's that's something that is optional. One year to the next.
Right.
Uh, but there's a bunch of other ones, that's not the only one, so may maybe if you could categorize those, I think it would be. Helpful to kind of paint a picture of what that would be.
Absolutely. I was just saying, that's probably pretty easy for us to pick out too, so. Make a pie chart.
Yeah.
I guess I'll throw this out there, do you want me to go through departments?
I think my exception might might help speed this along because. Uh, you know, operations cost really don't change significantly from year to year across the departments.
The general fund overall, we are budgeting a nine percent decrease. In expenditures. Or excuse me, overall, not that's not. Um, operationally, we are budgeting a nine percent decrease. Um, one big thing, park fund, the park, uh the loan for Valentine Community Park is paid off in December of this year. That was a ten year note. Then the. Two hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year. So that'll be paid off this year.
Is that the one over here?
Yeah, the day, the day part. This is Centennial Park.
Okay, oh, you're talking about the one where the batting pages are.
Well, yeah, squash pen, okay.
We never go over there, that's all the way on the other side of the.
Other side of town.
Yeah. So on this page, I do have a quick.
Yeah, wire fund.
You know it, um, so North Pooter Water Missagreement, that whole line. Just maybe you can just help offer it through, because the budget went up by, you know, like one point two million of them. You know, only ten thousand dollars in the first half, but there's just a lot of stuff going on there. How did that all come to be?
So.
Show them that formula on the contract, that we're really confused.
Oh, God. In twenty twenty four, the final price ended up being one point eight. We get that bill in November. We didn't know. What that rate was going to be when we were budgeting twenty twenty five. Uh, at the time we were doing the budget in twenty twenty five, the. Way the rate was calculated, um we. Budgeted for the worst, which we thought was a significantly higher rate. Um, there were some changes made, that rate came down, that's why the the bill ended up being one point eight, we pay it once a year. Which is why you only see ten thousand, that's just some administrative assessments we get from uh North Pooter. That's been paid year to date, the best estimate we have right now. Is a. We're again based on the um our actual water usage, so what we've seen happen over the summer. And what we anticipate the rate being, uh we're looking at potentially a one and a quarter payment for twenty twenty six. We do still need to benefit conservatively, so we're going to benefit a little bit higher. Uh, in case there is more usage, we pay for all the water that we take out of the reservoir. So um if a water line breaks and dumps a bunch of water, we still gotta pay for it, um so we we. Uh, budget for that. Sorry, I didn't mean to put that in the world, um so that's where the one point five. Uh, comes into play.
That helps a lot. Um, and then the interest rate, we're down, are they charging us interest on what we've effectively used? Not paid for, or what is that?
There's, this goes back to the eighty three contract that determines how much. Wellington pays for the water. And you know, the eighty three contract gives us a certain amount, basically for three, two hundred and seventy five acre feet. When we go above that, this formula kicks in, formula includes things like the price of a North Pooter share. Um, how much water we used, uh but one of the variables that has been. Is the interest rate, and it's. And it's unfortunate, it's kind of an arbitrary. Source that they get this interest rate number from, and only they are privy to what that interest rate is until they tell us what the bill is. But if you remember in twenty twenty COVID hit, following that, the Fed started raising interest rates. You know, to help stabilize the economy during that time period. Well, the North Pooter interest rate also went up too, and that's why we saw big increases in how much. That cost for that water was for a year, and that's why everyone was complaining that their water bill doubled and tripled over over several years. So we're expecting interest rates to drop down now. They're not charging us interest on the water, they're not, this is just an arbitrary figure that's part of the calculation there.
Yes, it's not like debt interest.
Yeah, no, 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 no.
Interest in the other sense.
And it it's not uh tied to a.
Consumer price index.
It's not tied to an index of any sort.
Tied to the Fed rate. It's, it basically came from. Loans given to farmers, local farmers essentially. So whatever that local bank was that they have in their back pocket, they say, yeah, we'll we'll let you have that that pay for eight percent interest. Okay, that's what, that's what they charge.
Now, one thing that is also different this year, um for the first time, we're calling on our shares. So we own seventy five shares, um about two, two and a half acre feet per share, I believe. Um, so for each of those shares, they are delivering that water in an expense to us.
And which means we've reduced the amount that we're paying for.
So we get two hundred and seventy five shares included in the agreement, we have seventy five shares that we own. We have to pay for the water on top of that with a calculation that makes most brains explode.
It's it's an ugly, ugly calculation, but we are in negotiations with North Pooter to to get. That change, we've been doing that for two years now.
Good, I saw, I saw in twenty five, we're paying for a water source development plan, so maybe that's a little bit of leverage we can push someone, right?
Well, that's actually there have been, has been their recommendation, it was part of the original contract, it actually. Spelled out that we should be exploring alternative water sources. But um we are actively. In negotiations with the water source right now, and we'll see how that works out.
It sounds like the Glade reservoir is still going to happen.
Yeah, but we're not going to be part of that. Prices over two billion dollars now.
They've cut it in half as well, but from the original. Project, which was two reservoirs and NISP, it's doubled in price.
It was originally six hundred, six hundred million dollars for the for the NISP project, okay, two billion.
That's a lot of zeros.
All right, so before we move into capital projects, any other?
Provided, I can understand my notes from earlier, um page twenty. And something, oh wait, that is where we are. Well, I guess a question on this section.
All right, but any other questions on operating expenses? Operations, okay, capital projects, so these are broken down by fund, um you also have a five year outlay. However, I will say uh that the board is only approving appropriations for the following year. Um, it's a little convoluted because what we do is we look at our end of year estimate. Um, when you start a project, you. It it might go multiple years, we need to make sure that funding remains, can't just cut off a project mid-year, so. Whatever's unexpended at the end of the year, which is that next column, um becomes part of the budget. That you're working with, so sometimes you need to add to it, or maybe we just appropriated those funds in twenty five and they need to carry through to twenty six. But the column that says budget twenty twenty six is the dollar amount that the board will be approving. Uh, knowing what's on the docket for years to come. And then we have a description, so we really try to think about the the community holistically here, what is needed. Uh, when is it needed, um and then plan for that accordingly. So we start with the general fund. And there's, there's also some, you'll see here, we have required by um Senate bill, so there are some statutory. Um, or legislative things, I should say that uh we have to plan for, um so those are. We we do that as well as those projects, so. Um, and I should say that the. The like the contra- general fund contribution for Saddleback, there's, you're going to see some of these. Where we have um development agreements in place with developers, they are actually going to put in bigger sewers or. Um, put in infrastructure that's larger than what their development is needs, um it's called oversizing and. To that they can pay for it um upfront and it's going to be a better deal. For the town because we don't have to pay to then increase that at a later point. So you'll see, um there's some of that oversizing throughout these funds as well.
So all we're paying for is just the added cost of going from a twelve inch to maybe an eighteen inch sewer. They're going to do the construction, they get the people mobilized and done, their labor cost doesn't increase, but materials do, so.
So any questions on the first page of the general fund on some of these projects?
Yeah, the vehicle replacement, so we're not planning on replacing anything in twenty five.
Are you, is this page twenty?
Yeah.
So that's the street fund, the street fund. No, you're good, you're good, the street fund, um at at this time does not anticipate needing a vehicle in twenty twenty six. I'll tell you, we're also looking at fleet services. Uh, fleet management service, so we're, as we continue to grow, um. And buying vehicles in several different funds, um kind of when we brand them into the ground, isn't the best use of capital. Um, so we are in talks uh with a fleet provider. Um, that could actually then remove. The vehicle replacement expense entirely, and we would have a fleet expense across the funds and operations. That having a vehicle for five years and offloading it, at that point, you're going to have much better. Residual value. Springs down the expense of buying a new one or of obtaining a new vehicle. Right now, we do have several older vehicles that we continue to service. Through our street shop that. Selling them at this point is not as as lucrative.
Or leasing.
Yeah.
Sometimes leasing is good.
And that's what a lot of the fleet services, um it is, it's a type of lease. So I can go back to the general fund, or we can stay in the street fund if there's other questions. Any of these projects? So this is where the big, where the, the Cleveland Avenue starts here, um. So we are at, I believe, ninety percent design on that, so we're really honing in those, those costs. Um, so that's where you see the original ballpark for the street part was four million. Um, that was a better idea now. I'm going to just jump to the drainage, just so I can talk about the other side of that. Let me go back, that sewer drainage, um. So then we have the Cleveland Avenue. We originally anticipated a million, so we, you know, what we thought was a five million dollar project, um,
Eight million.
Eight million dollar project, we, we were really honing in. So, yeah, I'll go back to the street fund. Any questions at the street fund? Any questions in water fund? Uh, so water source development is part, so this is actually that raw water fee that I showed you earlier, um. The reality, we, we've lowered the, the water purchase, because that's, but there are about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a share. Um, and the reality of what is that, eight, nine, ten shares coming up, um, a year's not realistic. Um, so that's why it's, it's lowered to the, the million. We did buy a share this year, so if we have the opportunity, um, it is the long-term, the least expensive way for us to guarantee water for the town. Um, and we are doing that water source development plan. That, uh, is looking at those future, future needs and how do we get them?
Does North Pooter still list some shares available?
That would be a median question, I don't know, yeah.
I think should, you should mention, there's some shares, I don't know how many, I was hoping to get an idea how much, how many serves were available. But it's, but it's thirty thousand dollars more per share than what they've been going for.
Yeah, the, the share we bought this year was a, a, like a private transaction. Um, North Pooter lists them, they're gonna have a, a price on top of that. Hey. Sewer fund? We've really, you can see, I mean, we've had a, a lot, we've finished up that, the water reclamation facility. Um, so. I will say the viewpoint lift station, um, is partially funded by a grant. So once we actually break ground on that, um, we're waiting on FEMA. So.
I've been thinking, nobody still works there.
They don't, nevermind. I haven't, drainage fund. And then our park fund. And that. Budget, and we're down on all this budget. Questions, comments, concerns, feedback, anything you want me to take to the board, anything? Uh, that we feel trustee Cannon should discuss with the rest of the board.
Uh, I like this presentation more than the previous ways of looking at the budget. It's easier to read in a spreadsheet style than in the pro forma style.
You want to fall down?
Oh.
Yeah, we have Halloween.
Give me that possum decision off the.
We have Halloween decorations all around the building and.
The town has done a, a great job in my opinion with budget compared to several years ago. The fact that we're year after year, you're now getting the, the, the GFOA Outstanding Budget Award speaks volumes for to Nick and his staff and, and the work that they're doing. Cause the budget is, is a policy document for the board, but it's a communication document to the resident. And that GFOA Outstanding Budget Award says, you're presenting a comprehensive plan that's easy to understand. So a resident can say, what's going on with their town? And it explains how the revenues are, come in, how we account for that, and how we track that, you know, what, what's the difference between different funds? And what does all that mean? So it's a good communication document and it gives a lot of good graphics to help illustrate what that is, and I appreciate your concern, your questions about, you know, can we group some of these kind of things, especially when it comes to paying benefits and so forth, for example? You know? And that's a, that kind of gives you an idea of, of what the true personnel costs are, which is between besides the LCSO, which is probably our biggest expense, you know, personnel costs are more, are huge.
Um, I mean, ac- across the organization, your, your wages, benefits, uh, professional development, your, your staff expenses going to be higher than LCSO.
Yeah.
LCSO is probably our largest single, uh, operational line item.
Yeah.
Your pe- people that are, that are here doing the work in the parks, on the streets. Um, they're, they're the biggest expense. All right, last minute questions, comments, concerns? And I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting at seven forty-eight PM. So thank you all.
Thank you.